I'll call this council workshop to order. It is June 18th, 7:00 PM. We're supposed to have an explanation of role of town councilor administrator under the town charter. We have our attorney here. Normally, this is done in a non-meeting scenario. Upon advice of our legal counsel, I'm going to reschedule this meeting with the council's approval for next Wednesday. And it's going to be called a non-meeting. That's what it is. Legal advice from our counsel. Should we take that in the form of a motion? FX?
We usually just vote it.
Just vote it? We don't need a motion on that, do we?
No, you don't.
No, okay. So, I will ask the council for a show of hands, and I won't say the lights on, to move this to next week's meeting.
Non-meeting.
Non-meeting? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right. And FX, I would think Mr. Malowski, he's free to go?
Yep.
We don't need FX?
He doesn't speak, though.
No, you stay.
Unless you want him here to answer any question that might arise relative to this.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's hold on to for that, okay. And next item on the agenda is Mr. Pelzer with the Cemetery Committee.
Dana, excuse me.
Yes?
Time for the meeting?
Seven o'clock.
Seven.
Yeah. I'll go into more detail to what that meeting is because I also had some other things on that agenda for next Wednesday. We'll touch base on that. Mr. Pelzer is here, and he needs some clarification from the council. You've all received FX's memo regarding the cemetery trustees, and it is dated June 16th. And, Mr. Pelzer, you have a podium.
Thank you.
Please state your name and your address, and how many kids, and...
Edward Pelzare, 11 Oak Street, Newmarket, chairperson and cemetery trustees. I guess I'm here for a couple of reasons. I have another reason to be here tonight, and one of those reasons is to ask the town council if they'll draft a resolution to authorize withdrawal of up to $15,000 from the town cemetery's capital reserve fund for the use of the restoration and repair of stones in the Old Town Graveyard. That was another reason I was coming tonight. Let me go back a little bit on history. Town council three years ago set up the cemetery trustees, five-member board. We started meeting, and the first thing that we did as trustees was to revise the rules and regulations for Riverside Cemetery. And then when we completed that, we decided to look at the work that needed to be done in the Old Town Cemetery on Terrace Drive behind the police station. And we set a variety of priorities, and the three top priorities for that cemetery was first to remove some trees that were inside the cemetery and that were along the stone wall that were old, had been hit by lightning, and we felt that it was better to take them down rather than them coming down during a storm and creating more damage within the cemetery. Second priority, we felt, was the restacking of the stone wall around the cemetery. It's been there 100-plus years, and the wall has fallen down, and we thought that that needed to be restacked. And the third priority that we wanted to work on was the mending of the stones in the cemetery, straightening stones in the cemetery, and cleaning all the stones in the cemetery. There are a variety of other priorities after that, but those were the three we wanted to start with. So, last fall, we had the trees removed in the cemetery, and we have now set up an appointment for someone to come in and do the restacking of the stone wall. Now, the funding for those two items was a line item in this current year's town operating budget for the Public Works Department, and there was $10,000 in there for those two projects. We won't use quite all of the money, but that's where that funding comes from. The funding for the repair of the stones in the cemetery is in a capital reserve fund that was created also in this current year's budget, and there was $15,000 set aside in that for the beginning of the repair and the cleaning of the stones in the cemetery. So, once the wall gets done, we were in hopes of starting the work on the repair of the stones, and I know the Warren article that created that capital reserve fund says that town council agents to expend funds, so I guess we're here, I mean, we realize that these are town funds, and we appreciate the town funding those particular items for those projects, and so that's what we're here for, so...
Okay.
I guess I'll entertain questions for any, for you guys, for where you want to start.
I think one of the things is that we've got some clarification that even though it says it on that resolution, the expenditure of those funds, the council, our legal council here is, I believe otherwise, says that because you are a, what's the word I want to use, they're not really a department, but they're, for RSA, they're a separate entity, and they can expend those funds without coming to the council for any type of approval. And in addition to that, even though it's coming from the CIP, because I questioned it whether it was becoming, coming from, even though the CIP, would it be considered like a department taking money out, and you have to go through that process?
Right.
And the legal opinion was because you are a separate, and what's the word I want to use here? Not charter, but...
Ent...
No, there's a name for it. FX, what is that?
Committee?
Committee. Maybe that's the word I'm looking for, committee, that you don't have to have council approval to expend those. Now, the other question I had was, even though they don't need council approval, and it says it on the resolution, and I think that's something we always put in there anyways as a guideline, but because of the uniqueness of the state RSA, do they have to go out, or can we recommend that they do go out and seek at least three bids, because it is taxpayers' money, or are they exempt from that, and they can choose whoever they want without going out to a bid process?
I'll jump in for a moment. For the members that don't know who I am, my name is FX Bruton, town council with McNeil, Taylor &amp; Gallo in Dover. And the first thing I wanted to mention was that the issue was, one, based more on statute versus charter or the Budget Act or anything like that. That's why we came up basically with that opinion. In our opinion, we would, I haven't had a chance to look at it, but I would bet that our opinion, the best opinion we would give, would be that they're still operating for the benefit of the town and that they should follow the procedures of the town, despite the fact that they are trustees as set forth by the statute, and able to, as long as the funds are appropriated, able to spend those funds in the exercise of their discretion as trustees. So, I would suggest that they, it's highly probable that they should follow the town's regulations as they're acting on the behalf of the town. I haven't had a chance myself to look at that in detail, but I think that's what our opinion would be.
Okay. And that was one of my concerns to the, in the other part of that, Mr. Malowski and I spoke about this, that we would encourage, whatever work you're going to have down there, and one example comes to mind, cutting trees, if you could use our own DPW people, if they have the resources to do that, that might help with some of the cost. I'm not suggesting you have to, but I'm just saying, you know, it might save you some monies there.
When we did the tree proposal, we went out and we did get three bids.
I meant that.
I had talked with the town administrator, and I had talked with the chairman of the town council at the time, and I talked with finance director, and we looked at the bidding process that the town has, the regulations and what they do. So, we did go out and we did get three bids. We did talk with Public Works about it. The trees that were removed were about four foot in diameter, probably 75 feet high, located in the middle of the cemetery. We needed a crane that was 120 feet into the cemetery, and we needed somebody that could climb the tree, cut it down by pieces, and lift it out, out of the cemetery so that it could be cut up. And it was not something that, because we're in keen tune to the fact that, yeah, it is town money, and we're looking to do that, and so we went with a low bid, and they took the trees out and they ground the stumps. As far as the stone wall goes, we've taken bids on that, too. Oh, I'd say we have four or five bids on that also, and the person that we selected was also the low bid on that one. We were comfortable with that person. And for the repair of the stones, we just got a bid in yesterday, which was our third bid there. So, we are looking at bids. We are talking with people. We are seeing what their work ethic is, and we're just not deciding that, you know, we're going to have Mike do it, or whoever it happens to be.
Mr. Pelzer, just so we have point of clarification, I am not chastising you at all.
Oh, no, I understand that, yes.
You've done everything the way you're supposed to do it.
No, 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 no.
The only question I had was, just because it is CIP money, do we still have to have you go? And if they, if the attorney said, "No, you don't have to," I would have said, "Fine."
Well, our feeling is...
You've been very cautious about it.
We're still going to, yes. And when we first started on this road of being on the trees and on the wall and on the stones, we were very keen in the fact that, okay, we're spending money, and we have to make sure, since this is the first time that we're doing it, that we wanted to make sure it was done right, and that nothing was going to come back on us as trustees or town council, and we weren't going to have a problem. There were a few rough spots, but, no, we are going out to a bid process.
Counselor Bertrand.
I have a question. I realize you're doing the right thing. You are getting bids and doing the right thing. I'm not chastising you either. I was just curious, when we form committees and they do expend money, is there language in our charter that specifies that they use town fiscal procedures for expending that money?
That's up to the council's discretion when they do a resolution or anything requires expenditures from the town. We usually put that in there somewhere, but is it in the charter? I don't think it's in the charter per se.
You know, it's like in default, whenever a committee's formed, that they have to follow a bidding procedure whenever they expend money.
See, the other part of this, to the cemetery committee, is actually something that's required for each town.
Through an RSA.
Through an RSA. So, that's where the uniqueness of it is, as opposed to town setting up a committee for the cemetery.
Veterans Committee.
Right, a veterans committee would be one of them.
This kind of falls through the cracks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Anybody else have a question for Mr. Pelzer? We've answered your legal questions, and you've done a great job, and I'm sure you're going to continue. And we have one other person that would like to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Alpern?
While the attorney's here, I have a question.
Please state your name.
Rich Alpern, 204 South Main, I'm vice chair of the cemetery trustees.
Thank you.
I have a question, as long as the lawyer's here.
You should be directing the council.
Okay.
Okay.
The last time we, the cemetery trustees, had money to spend, it was put into Public Works budget. My question is, should cemetery trustees have their own budget so that when money needs to be spent, the cemetery trustees don't have to go getting it from the Public Works budget? Should it be in cemetery trustees' budget?
Mr. FX?
The interesting thing about the statute is that it's very brief, and the point of the statute really isn't to flesh out exactly how all of this works, unfortunately. It was more set up to make sure that there are cemeteries for obvious reasons, so there's a lot in the statute that relates to those issues and not a lot that relates to the actual funding aspect of this. That being said, I think the statute, and I don't have my memo in front of me, speaks about the appropriations for the cemetery committee in that they're authorized to spend those funds as long as they are appropriated. Quite frankly, I don't really think it matters either way where it shows up in the budget. It just has to be in the budget and has to be appropriated or budgeted for those purposes.
Okay.
So, it really, in our opinion, legally doesn't matter in terms of where the line item is. It just has to be there before they can do anything.
Okay. The money has to be available before they can do anything.
And it has to be part of your budget process, the whole, you know, the whole deal, if you will, which it already is under the Public Works.
Yeah, it is, already under a budget. I'm going to let Counselor Quox ask the question, which I think I was ready to ask, but I think she's going to do it better.
I see it says, "Understanding powers and duties expended or monies raised and appropriated by the municipality for cemetery purposes," which is what we did, and we put it into the Public Works Department. And Public Works, any department can transfer monies within their department, but I don't know if the cemetery would be considered in their department.
Right. I think, to be honest, I think it probably isn't.
It probably isn't, so therefore, we fall under 5.6 of transfers under the town charter, which states, "After the budget has been adopted, no money shall be drawn from the treasury of the town, nor shall any obligation for the expenditure of money be incurred except pursuant to a budget appropriation."
Right.
The head of any department with the approval of the administrator may transfer any balance or any portion thereof from one fund or agency within his department to another fund or agency within his department.
Right.
The administrator with the approval of the council may transfer any balance or any portion thereof from one department to another. So, it sounds like if the money's been appropriated for the cemetery and it's under the DPW's budget, that the town council and the administrator has to approve the appropriations. That's how I read it.
They have to approve...
No, no.
The transfer of the appropriation, and just think of it as buckets, and you have two full buckets, and then you use one, and within the department, you want to transfer money that was appropriated for one purpose, but within the same department, to the other bucket because you ran out of money there. You can do that as long as you go through the process that you just identified.
Right. So, appropriations can be made within the department?
The transfers can be made within the department.
Within the department.
Right. That doesn't mean that you have to still have council or town administrator approval to spend those funds. It's just the transfer from one use to another use within the same department.
Within the same department.
Correct.
But you said that you didn't think that the cemetery would be in that same department?
It's...
How does the town classify that? Are we classifying the cemetery?
Let's do it two ways. You probably in the past may have put them in there, it's a relatively small number in terms of your overall budget process. I'm suggesting to you that it would be appropriate if there was a separate line item for them. Then you would basically avoid what is almost, what you're really describing is the risk that the DPW says, "I'm going to grab those funds because they're in my department."
Right.
You would avoid that by setting up a different line item in the budget, but other than that risk, there really, in my opinion, isn't any other risk. They could go spend those funds because they were appropriated for the cemetery, for those purposes. As long as those funds are there, they can spend them, and they can do that as a result of their trusteeship, if you will, under the statute.
Do you recommend that we do something like that, that we have something separate?
Yeah, like when I started, I said, "To me, it really doesn't matter, I guess, what you're doing if you set up a separate line item in the budget process, because you're at least eliminating the risk that the DPW would go..." Now, of course, remember, the DPW, in order to do that, would have to go through a process of shifting those funds, and it probably wouldn't happen anyway, but it would be prudent to set it up separately because statute is expecting that there'll be funds there for the cemetery, for good reason, obviously, to go and spend those funds as, in the exercise of their discretion.
So, the, are you all set? So, the next appropriations that we do in the budget coming up in December, it may make sense at that point to put a separate line item in the budget for cemeteries, and I guess I would refer that to finance people to look at those issues and see...
Right, your budget committee.
Yeah, budget committee, what the pitfalls are on that. And Mr. Malowski had his hand up. Please come to the podium.
Are we talking about the whole cemetery budget that's within the Public Works' budget?
Yeah, moving that out to a separate line item.
How does that work, like signing off the payroll?
Not now. It wouldn't be this year.
No, but I'm saying in the future.
Yeah.
The committee going to sign off on payroll every week and everything like that? I mean, I have salaries and everything in there.
Well, that's an issue that I think you folks in the finance will have to work out, but if it's something that can be done, how much payroll are we talking about?
Well, in the wintertime, it's not a lot, but...
Yeah, in the summertime.
As soon as the snow melts till November, there's a full-time person and a part-time person down there.
Well, let me put it this way. I'm very comfortable with our finance director that you folks should be able to work something out, but it doesn't, it does make sense to me to have a separate line item in the budget. I don't know how else we could work out those details, but I suppose you folks could do that. And we have Counselor Palowski, and then Counselor Quox.
I just thought to say that I think as we get into budget season next year, sitting down and leaving a line in the DPW budget for what you people do, and then having a separate line item for the trustees for the rest of the funds that they need to do the extra work that DPW can't do, such as the crane coming in to remove the trees, and any major work that you may not have time to do. Keeping in the DPW budget the work such as mowing and raking and what your employees are doing in the cemeteries, keeping that in your budget, but having a separate item for what the cemetery trustees need for what they are working at accomplishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Quox?
That's basically the same thing I wanted to say, Mike, is that, you know, for Rick's concerns of doing payroll and everything else, not all cemetery work should fall under that. It should be just the money appropriated, that the cemetery trustees know restoration or so forth, and under the 289/7, the RSA, that money will be appropriated aside for the trusteeship to expend, and Rick still has control over his employees to do the general maintenance that we've been doing, the mowing and fixing a fence and so forth and so on. We have to separate those two, and I think that's easily done by signifying exactly what the money's going to be for the trustees.
Again, referring it back to the finance people. Sound right? Aye.
Just one last thing.
I'm sorry, Counselor LaBrach.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Just a question. I mean, are we confusing capital reserve funding as opposed to budget? I mean, budget is more along the lines of, you know, your normal daily works and everything, whereas what you're talking about expending is more of a capital reserve, capital improvement, whatever you prefer.
Right.
So, I think we're kind of talking about two different things here.
We are.
So, you know, maybe, you know, as far as Mr. Malowski's concerns, you know, that still, it stays the same way it always has. It's just more under the capital improvement that you're concerned about.
The only thing we're concerned about is the capital improvements and...
Right.
So, I don't think we really have to reinvent the wheel.
You're correct.
I think we're just, you know, moving along with what we're presently doing, because that won't interfere with his summer health or anything like that.
It wouldn't, because in his budget, what you have right now, you have monies in your budget to cover the cost of the mowing and all that in the cemetery.
Under cemetery.
And what Council Brach, you're absolutely correct. CIP is totally different. So, he's not taking money, you're not taking money from their budget, from the CIP, to cover the costs of labor. Theirs is perpetual help, put it that way, no other word to use. We all clear? But again, refer it back to finance people to work on that.
On Saturday, July 19th, from 9:00 to 2:00, we're going to have a community service day at that Old Town Cemetery. I'll put some flyers out on the table out there in case you're interested. What we're planning to do that day is, we're hoping to get some loam delivered prior to that date by Public Works out there, and Club Chameleon's going to come and help us and wheelbarrows, and they're going to be filling in some of the sunken graves and holes in the cemetery so that we can hopefully flatten the cemetery out so that when the town does go in there to mow the cemetery, it'll be easier to maintain that way, and also in the fall, once the leaves fall, the leaves won't get all caught up in holes throughout the cemetery. So, we're going to have a workshop that day, and anybody that's interested, there's a telephone number and a website here if anybody wants to show up and see what's going on.
Excuse me. Can you give us the date and the time again?
Saturday, July 19th, 9:00 AM, 2:00 in the afternoon.
We'll call it cleanup day.
Yeah, we have a community service day.
Any other questions for Mr. Pelzer? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Okay. Moving along. Oops.
I'll see you next week.
Main Street project update, Julie Gleber. I just want to say upfront, thank you, Julie, for all these meetings you're, every week that, every time we have, when you come and you attend these and update us. Yes, thank you, FX. And we'll be in touch next week.
Wednesday.
We'll get back to you with the time. Thank you.
I actually have four items under my name, so I'll just start. The Main Street project, this phase of work, there actually isn't a whole lot to say because it's been going without incident. We haven't run across anything that we didn't expect. Because we put the temporary water line in, we haven't experienced any unanticipated water breaks, so we are still anticipating that the switchover from the east side of Main Street to the west side of Main Street will probably take place sometime the third week of July.
East to west side now? East?
East side to west side. East side to west side. And I also, other than what I'll discuss under the discussion of the Rivermore Fence, I don't have any change order items to bring to your attention at this time either. The One Prescott Street, included in your packet was the memo that I had done back in January, and then I subsequently came to a town council meeting March 5th to review the information in the memo and to let the council know what had transpired relative to the three-phase transformer and where we were going to be locating it, and the reasons for why we were going to be locating it there.
And I was not at that meeting.
Correct.
So, when we were talking about it, it was very vague to me. Now I know why. Counselor Quox?
Julie, at that March 5th meeting, you had asked the council to, did not appoint the location of that transformer pad at that meeting. It was supposed to be put on another agenda, but it...
No. I watched the tape, as a matter of fact, today, so there was never any discussion on the council's part that we needed to come forward with any other information or any other alternatives. We were coming forward saying, "This is where we're going to locate the three-phase transformer. Here are the reasons why." Questions and discussions ensued, and the council said, "Okay, thank you."
So, presumably, that was taken as an, "Okay, let's do it."
Correct.
Because there were no objections to it at the time, or any really concrete reasons to why it shouldn't go there. Is that correct?
Correct. It was certainly our understanding after we left that meeting that we had informed the council of what we were going to be doing, and that's what we've done.
Now, in light of that being done, I see over here that we still don't have an easement from...
No, we do.
We do have the easement now.
We do have the easement for the other utility work that needed to take place on the American Legion's property, and as a matter of fact, the single-phase transformer pad has already been installed. Also, I might add, all of the underground conduit has already been installed as well.
For both?
For both.
Okay. Are you all set? One of the concerns that I'm hearing on a regular basis, and I'm not sure if the rest of the councils have heard the same thing, that... the residents in that area have a real concern, and justifiably so. I guess the pad is gonna be a 10 by 10 and the transformer's gonna be as tall as, what, five, six feet tall?
I had thought that the transformer pad was eight feet by eight feet, but it's not there yet, so.
Okay.
And yes, I believe the transformer is about six feet tall.
Okay, I walked down there, drove down there last night and kinda stood off to the side and looked around. And where that trailer is, I guess, is where this thing is going. Not as long, cause the trailer's obviously longer.
Correct.
But I'm, and it can't go back too far because there's some shrubs there, I guess, with the driveway behind it?
Well, it, right, it probably could not move any closer towards Main Street.
Right.
Because that is a fire lane that actually does not belong to the town.
Okay, I'm talking about behind the trailer. There's some shrubs there, some obividas, small ones. Okay, so it can't go back any further there. So where you see the trail in now is basically where this thing is gonna be sitting.
Essentially, yes.
Yeah, and it can't go further down this way, or?
Well, if it went further into the lot, then that would, I'm guessing, further encroach upon whatever other use the property owner would anticipate for the property. Now, right now, the property belongs to Severino Trucking.
Right, but the understanding is that the town would purchase it in another fiscal year coming up.
Correct.
I guess the question I have is, how much, well first of all, how much land do we own there?
In terms of acreage?
Yeah, I mean
I actually, I don't know.
An eighth of an acre, probably.
Not a lot.
I believe that's
About an eighth of an acre, yeah. And the conduit's already there and it's already on the other side, so. And I don't wanna suggest we move it because we've already got a lot of money invested into that. So the only alternative we have right now is, once it's in place, how do we camouflage it? How do we disguise it? And I guess, when I was down there yesterday, keeping in mind the size of this thing and looking over towards the Legion, it is apparent also to me, if it was over on that side, you still would see it. It still would be a huge monstrosity thing to be looking at. And I don't know of any other solution at this point. Unless some technology happens overnight, between now and the time you put this thing on, you know, online, on the ground, that everything goes to a micro.
Right.
I don't see any other way around it. And I do understand the citizens' concerns in that area. So, Counselor Quox?
Is there gonna, is, do those transformers have a buzzing sound to them?
They hum if you're standing right next to it.
If you have a, cause three-phase, if you have a high demand, are you gonna get, the higher the demand, are you gonna get a louder buzz from it?
I don't believe so.
Don't know. And would it be very expensive, you said the underground conduit's in already, to move the underground conduit to where the barn is where the first location was discussed?
It would certainly be costly, I don't know what the cost would be. In addition to the cost, we would have to go back to the American Legion and get permission for something which we wrestled with them for, I don't, a year and a half, two years, three years, two years. And this is why it's located at One Prescott Street.
Because, well, basically, they didn't wanna lose a parking space because of it. But there's been debris and stuff there for the last two years on it.
And I understand that. And please, we didn't feel that this was an ideal situation either, but without the easement from them, we could not move forward.
Couldn't we have used eminent domain for it?
Anything is possible, I suppose we could have, although we didn't really discuss that at the time.
Most of this was discussed prior to, with Mr. Dixon, or?
Some of it involved Mr. Dixon, but mostly it was staff and Underwood Engineers that met with the American Legion to try to, and PSNH, to try to work out a satisfactory location.
I'm just amazed at us, being used strictly for their purposes and they don't want it on their property, but it's okay to shove it on somebody else's.
But, you know
It bothers me, I don't know why, but it bothers me.
Well, it bothered us too, but again, we felt that our backs were against the wall, so to speak.
But was any, was there any discussion about eminent domain?
I don't recall any discussion of eminent domain.
Under these circumstances, do you think we'd be able to get eminent domain?
I, that's a legal opinion and I wouldn't wanna
Very costly at this point.
You also?
Okay, and Counselor Pulaski and then Counselor Branche and Counselor Minnetalee.
One of the concerns of the residents in that area is the fact that it is used by one entity. And in the Exeter Road project, there was a large transformer that was put behind the Autobody shop. And I'm assuming they had the, they gave the easement for it.
Correct.
Because it was for their use only.
Correct.
And it's my understanding from the owner of that business that he had to move his dumpster and a few other things to accommodate that. And I think where it is a single-use transformer, forcing the town to either use eminent domain or to relocate it, I just don't think that's being fair to the general public. And I think as far as the location of that transformer, even with bollards, I think it's a high risk to that transformer being in so close to the road, it's relatively close to the road. Having been on a recent trip to Amsterdam, whether are bollards all over the place, minimum amount of traffic, you all the time see bollards like this or like this because they've been hit. And I, I don't feel that that is the right location. I think we really ought to step up talks with the Legion about the safety issue, the fact that it is their transformer, and, you know, it doesn't really leave us much option other than locating it on their property. And once everything is done, the town takes over that property, there's no particular plans right now that I'm aware of for what we are going to use that property for. There's a number of options, small park, parking area, and if it's parking area, Legion patrons are gonna park there. So they're losing one parking space behind the Legion, to me, is not an issue enough to force that to be moved.
Again, I don't disagree with anything you're saying.
Thank you.
I just wanna point a clarification, are you in support for it to stay there or to move it? I'm getting
I'm in support for it not to be at One Prescott Street.
Okay. Who was next, I'm sorry, Counselor?
Mike.
LaBranche? Yeah.
Couple things, first of all, I think the town actually purchased that property with the intent of utilizing it as part of the drainage solution for down there.
Yes, yes.
That was the original intent.
Right.
So that, you know, I understand maybe a park or whatever, you said those things could be factored in, but that was why we went to this, this location.
Actually, it was either that or we didn't need it, green space.
Right. Julie, do I understand you say that the conduit and everything has already been laid? I mean, it's
It's in the ground.
It's in the ground.
In the ground, in concrete, literally and figuratively.
Now, if we take a look at the original location on Legion property as opposed to the new location, did the town incur any cost, any additional cost because of the location change?
Not that I'm aware of, but that's not to say we didn't. I'm gonna say we probably did because there might have been increased trenching and, and concrete work, but I would actually defer to Phil McDonald and Underwood on that. It would not have come to me as a change order. It would have been billed as a line item within the body of the
You know
Pay application.
I recall the March 5th meeting, I believe it was, and I guess the only, the only way that I can look at it is hindsight being 20/20, I think the council should have perhaps done a motion or a vote on approving this, you know. And honestly, I don't think we did not approve it or we did approve it. I think we just nodded our heads and, you know, let's do what we gotta do. I don't know, I'm, I'm concerned about it, but I don't know at this point what we can do. It would cost a substantial amount of money to rip everything up, correct?
Correct. In addition, we would still have to go to the American Legion and negotiate with them.
And that could cause delays with the project.
That could cause delays.
A long time.
Thank you.
And I was just gonna say, with respect to eminent domain, I think probably the reason that wasn't discussed seriously earlier in the process, it's my understanding that's a fairly litigious process and time-consuming. And, you know, when you're talking about working under the constraints of a deadline, it probably wasn't the most practical solution at that time. But my question to you is, a lot of the citizens have expressed, particularly citizens with children, have expressed safety concerns. And do you share those concerns? And if so, what has, have any steps been taken?
Yeah, and I, I understand from reading the letter, the petition, that there are those concerns. I guess I'm not certain what those concerns are, whether they're concerns that if you're near the transformer, simply being near it, some harm will come from being near it? Or I, I don't know, just because I don't know what the specific concerns are relative to children.
Well, it, it's, is it your opinion, it's not inherent, is the transformer inherently dangerous?
No, I mean, if you drive through any suburb, any subdivision these days, all the power is underground and they all have transformers.
Okay.
A lot of times you drive through subdivisions and somebody has one on their front lawn, which means when they bought the house, they probably had an easement that went with it because public service would have required it, so.
I just wanna add to that if I could, Steve. There is a certain amount of responsibility of the parent to keep the child away from that too. I mean, we could say, you know, put a fence around it, we'd put boughs around it, we'd put trees around it. I mean, there's a certain responsibility there too.
I mean, they can't open the doors and get into it.
Right, yeah, they're locked, yeah. Counselor Jim Bergeron, and then Counselor Pulaski, and then Counselor Quox.
I walked it yesterday and I have to say it was kind of an unfortunate location, in my opinion. It does really stick out. Yeah, I think being by the barn would have been a better location. I don't think it's got a huge danger factor unless a car plows into it. But I had a concern about it being in a low location, being a transformer and being, I remember walking down there and having that particular area very, very flooded. That could be a concern also.
We, I mean, again, we obviously have changed a lot of the grading, that wall is gone. It's no longer the basin that it was during the previous two floods. And I know that Underwood has expressed that concern to public service and in the event of a flood, it trips off essentially. It doesn't present an electrocution issue.
And the cost is borne by PSNH, cause they approved the putting
It's their transformer, it's not our transformer.
Right, it's theirs. Didn't we add a catch basin somewhere on there too?
Yeah, pretty much in the middle of that space, there's a catch basin.
I'm sorry, Jim, go ahead.
I just, and I thought I might, you know, like somebody said, if you wanted to make it into a green space park, whatever. Cause that, that area does have very little of that, that you're kinda limiting yourself, but that's my piece.
Thanks.
This is pretty much a question for Phil McDonald, seeing he's here. Is there an option where Prescott Street, Mount Pleasant and all those streets aren't going to have underground utilities of running a line from the overhead lines there to the Legion rather than having that transformer? Is that an option? I know that throws a wrench into the works, but These are questions we've all asked the PSNH to minimize, obviously, the costs of the town and the project. And essentially, this is the end of the three-phase line. There's no overhead three-phase, I believe in that area. Jim Osborne would be the one to speak to directly on that. But we've asked these questions before, obviously, as Julie pointed out, we've, we've been discussing this issue and, and at length for quite some time. And we've actually moved that transformer three or four times. And till, till we got to the point where we did. And, and once again, I, I think it's, we need to really, once again, point out that the Legion, even though that transformer just serves them, they provided an easement to the town for a transformer that serves the rest of the, that alley. Okay, so there was some give and take from the Legion. Now, I couldn't, if I might, if I might add, I don't know if the, if the council would consider, you know, something along a screen, like a stockade fence or something along that line that would shield it in that direction. That, that would be relatively inexpensive. And, you know, an eight-foot-high, high fence there with, on two sides, it might be, you know, some, you know, something to consider. So I just wanted to throw that out.
Thank you.
Counselor Quox?
Does the location of the transformer meet the setback requirements for the town?
For PSNH's setback requirements?
Are for the town.
I'm not sure that the town would have setback requirements.
From, from existing buildings we have?
It's gotta be the, yes, it has to be a certain distance from the building and it will be the distance that it needs to be from the building.
While we're on that subject, I just wanna address that the council has a copy of a petition that was done by the residents in that area. And this was taken to our town clerk, Becky Benvenuti. And it's, as much as it is, it is a petition, it's not a legal sort of binding petition because it requires, and Miss Becky, Becky Benvenuti's here, it does not have the required signatures of 100, which is required by our charter, is that correct? So we certainly do want to acknowledge, even though these signatures are here, they mean something to us, even though they don't meet the criteria of the council having to have to take action on it. But as you, you heard tonight, we all have a concern. And perhaps it fell through the crack, I would say, I can't think of a better word. It doesn't make it right or wrong, perhaps on the May 5th meeting, as Counselor LaBranche, I think, said, we probably should have done a resolution, was that you?
Yes, I should have done a motion.
We should have done a motion on that. So I, I'm not sure what we can do about this because anything we do is gonna require, number one, a delay, quite a delay. Number two, a cost, certainly, that's gonna probably throw the budget way out of whack. And I think we're all sympathizing what's going on here. So what is the council at this point? I mean, we've discussed it, I don't wanna just leave it dropped and have the residents. I mean, if we wanna bring this back and talk about it, get a cost estimate, I don't know. I'm just gonna say right now, whatever we do to move that is gonna be very, very expensive. And we're gonna have to find the monies to do this. And I don't know if this, within the current budget, would you folks agree with this? Cause again, we don't know the cost either, so at this point.
Right, we haven't identified what the cost would be to move it. And again, I don't wanna sound like a broken record, but we didn't feel that this was an ideal solution either. And again, we certainly, I mean, this is why we came to the council at the March 5th meeting. We did not do anything in secret. We intended, certainly, for that discussion at March 5th to be letting the council know what we were doing and receive the council approval, and then that's, you know, that's what we've done, so.
Right, so I can't fault you for that. Mr. Raphael, I think, would like to add to that. If you could just take your address.
Raphael Roman from Four Prescott Street, 125 Main Street. I guess I wanna address just two issues. One is that the residents didn't mean for that to be a petition. It was basically because not anybody else could be here this evening, so it was never meant to try and be in a petition, so. But we did get it stamped and I think she verified 23 of the 27 signatures. To address the safety issue, I guess the letter wasn't as clear as it should have been. And the safety issue does not concern the transformer itself or any type of radiation or whatever people might think comes from it. It was more the fact that it's a six-and-a-half-feet-by-referently-eight-feet box that's gonna be on top of a concrete slab that's also a It was more the fact that it's a six-and-a-half-feet-by-referently-eight-feet box that's gonna be on top of a concrete slab that's also a foot high, fairly close to that corner. And so when you're walking your dog, riding your bike, doing whatever, if you've been down there for any period of time, people speed down from Main Street down Creighton Street and come around Prescott Street like it's part of the Indy 5 curve. So the concern is that drivers coming and making that curve won't see people on the other side of that box. So again, it's not because they think the box is going to be oozing contamination itself. It's because of the site risk, things of that nature. And while I would agree that it's parents' responsibilities, but an adult can easily get hit as well from the speeding that goes through there. And if you take a six-by-eight block, but on top of another foot, foot-and-a-half block, that's a lot of site that is being obstructed. There's a lot of families that walk up and down that with their kids, dogs, et cetera. So I believe that is the major safety concern. So I just wanted to address that. In terms of the money that's expended, Severino did have to dig quite a bit and lay the conduit down to where the proposed relocation of the transformer is. But if you look at where the conduit is now to where it would be if it went to the barn where it was originally proposed, that distance is actually quite short. And so while it would require some digging and laying more of the conduit, the conduit that's been laid has not been paved over, so it could easily be dug back up, reused on the other side. And granted, it would be, I guess it would be more expensive. But just to add, too, you know, the residents in this area have continuously been kind of damaged by everything that's been going on. We took over six months for the town to get them to respond to the ponding issue that happened. That was finally addressed. And then a month ago, it turned out that my sewer line was never hooked up when they took the old sewer line off. So my raw sewage had been dumping and seeping into my yard for the last nine months. And I found that out when it was starting, coming up through the ground in my yard. So when I say this, I'm saying that every time there's not enough money, you know, this and that, it seems to be our side of the street that's kind of getting the short end of the stick on it. So, you know, the council's decision as to what to do, what money to spend, et cetera. But I think the residents feel that's why they wanted to sign those letters, to say, hey, you know, we understand the Main Street's very important, we're all for it. But time and time again, the residents down there seem to be subjected to some of the negatives that keep occurring during the revitalization, so I think that was it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we're let up here. Julie, do you want to add anything to that, or the councils?
I guess I, we can certainly go to Underwood and Severino and talk about what exactly the cost would be. I mean, the conduit is encased in concrete, so I don't know how easy it would be to get it out and reuse it. I would have to guess off the top of my head, it would just be easier to abandon it and put new in. And I, that would be way less expensive unless filled in, there's a reason.
Well, there's even more costs, I mean, more concerns here, because you'll have to deal with the Legion.
Right. We could certainly put numbers to paper, but I don't know, I honestly, I don't know what we are going to do, or what you, I guess at this point, will now do relative to working with the American Legion. So now I'm specifically, having learned a lesson, I guess, from the March 5 meeting if nothing else, looking, now we're just looking for direction. Just tell us what you want us to do, and that's what we'll do.
Okay, before I, lots of counsel, I have two things. One, around that corner, coming down, is there any proposed curving, sidewalk, anything that could alleviate some of that?
No, although funny you should mention that. Mr. McDonald actually has a plan, an idea for Creighton Street. Do you want to talk about it?
Yeah. Before I talk about, and that was more of a landscaping issue that Julie's referring to. I'm just wondering if there isn't some confusion where exactly the transformer's going? Because we, you know, there was some layout down there, and there were some discussions when we were trying to site the transformer. And the transformer pad itself, if you're familiar with the area, if you've been down there, the transformer pad itself cannot be set because it's essentially going where the trailer is, okay? And I don't know, there's some other marks on the pavement that are further out. So as far as a car coming down there and hitting that thing, it's just not gonna happen, okay? It's, you know, it's right where the trailer is, okay? So there is room in having control of that property. I suppose it could be pushed further along that hedge row back, you know, if that's still a concern. But I don't, if it's not a concern with, you know, the trailer right now, and the trailer has a tongue that sticks out four or five feet. If it's not a concern with the trailer now, then I don't think it's gonna be a concern with the transformer pad. So I just wanted to spell that, and I'm not sure, because there is some paint on the pavement when we were citing it. We were working with Rick and Julie, and we did push it further than what the plan showed that we, that I think that was reviewed by council. It's further along that hedge row back because of those concerns that were viewed on the site. So I'm just wondering if there is some confusion on where it's going. And maybe the council, you know, if they need to revisit the area, you know, we can't get stakes or anything in the ground because the trailer's there. But, you know, if you can, you know, wind the front edge of that trailer up, that's about where the front edge of the concrete pad will be. Okay, so I just wanted to get that. And as far as the aesthetics of that area, I mean, I mean, come on, it's a sea of asphalt down there, okay? We have one, we have the same-sized transformer going next to the bandstand, so, you know, if it's really, and that was a problem as well. So, you know, the thing, you know, that Julie's referring to, we was looking for a way to soften that, that landscape. And there is a room for an island that would be, that come out from, because the road is a one-way street, you know, there's a lot more pavement than's there needed. And we could soften that, probably put a tree in that, in that area, and I think that would probably do more. You know, that'll improve that whole area a little bit more.
That makes sense. Would you recommend, and I'll make the suggestions to the council, if you could get something on drawing, and what we could do is go down and do a site walk and take a real hard look at that area before we start, you know, saying, do this, do this, do that?
Yeah, what I think the real, some people are better than us looking at the plans, so I think that, you know, we could mark it up a little bit better on the ground.
Okay.
If that would be, you know, a better way for folks to look at it. And, you know, and then if we need to make an adjustment, I'm not sure if they got all the end of the conduit in, because I think that has to, you know, it's going to the trail. So it's still looking at extending the conduit a little bit more. If they have to push it a little bit more, that's not a big expense. Looking at a fence or something, you know, myself, I prefer hedges around something like this. It's more of a natural landscape, but that's all a matter of preference. If you want to completely hide it, stockade fence, if you want to paint the fence green, you know, there's all kinds of things, I suppose, that you could do. That is, because of all the asphalt with the street, it happened to be where it is, and the Legion have parking on either side of the street, you know, it just lends itself to a big area of asphalt. There were some trees, I know, that were cut, and some of the residents, I'm sure, had some hot burn, you know, over some of the trees. So, you know, maybe there's a way to dress it up a little bit, but that's just, you know, that's just a thought.
Okay. The final question I have is, when do we plan on hooking up the power to that?
I can't answer that.
Is that out there somewhere?
Alls I can say is PSNH has been busy in the area. You've probably seen their trucks around. I understand that the underground conductors are all in the lower area by the bowl. You know, once, it's gonna be after Severino leaves the area, most likely, before they start pulling conductors up. But, you know, once, once an area is restored and signed off, and if it meets, if it falls within the way they have the power sectored out, and they can do a whole, you know, an area, I think they'll move in and do that, so...
All right. I would like to wrap this up, but there's a lot of lights here, because we still have a lot on the agenda. We could, you know, do a site walk at some point. Counselor Quox?
Could we possibly just look into the cost of either relocating or changing, and maybe open talks with the Legion, if that's possible? If that turns out to be completely out of the question, I would strongly suggest that in the future, anything that's going to be as intrusive as that, that the council does do a site walk for it. And if the town council feels that it is going to adversely affect any neighborhood, that maybe we should notify the abudders of what's planned there, because they don't all, you know, construction's going on. Invite them to the meetings and talk to them about it before we get as far as we have here. I think the town council should at least, if something else doesn't work out, at least require a vegetative buffer around that transformer for those people down there. Put a speed bump, a speed bump with signage coming down Creighton Street to slow the vehicles down, so there's no accidents coming around the corner. And also require the Legion to stripe their parking lot as required on a previous planning board-approved plat. I think they have 13 spots. That should be something that should be done, because it seems that the Legion, anyone parking down there for the Legionnaire are encroaching very close to all the neighbors down there. And also...
But we're really talking about the transformer here.
I know, but this is...
Yeah, well, I want to stick to that.
In regards to what, this is what's going on. And if we can maybe alleviate some of the other problems that these abudders are having down there, they might be able to digest the transformer being there. And also to have either the town or the Legion or both replace the vegetative buffer that was removed when all that other work was done, so it doesn't look like an asphalt jungle. I mean, you've got to do something for those neighbors. And was DES informed regarding the sewage problem down there? Because...
Yes.
They were?
Yes.
They're gonna do something for those people.
And I think that's what we're trying to do. I really want to stick to the issue of the transformer right now. The rest of that stuff, I'm not gonna use. I don't want to say cosmetic, but it is, those are things that will be addressed.
It's not cosmetic. If it's a quality of life down there, it's a...
I understand that, Counselor Quox, but I'm just trying to say, the issue right now is the transformer.
But I'm suggesting in case...
You don't want to go out to a broad range.
In case the transformer situation movement doesn't work out, this is the least that we could do for those abudders.
And those are things we've talked about, and I think we've come to some conclusions on some of those, the buffers, the trees will go back and all of that.
So just to make sure I understand our marching orders, if you will, we are not to locate, we are not to place the transformer pad until we have gone back to the American Legion and revisited that, whether they would allow us to put it in the original location. And then at the same time, come up with what the cost would be to do that, and then we'll come back to the council with that information.
In addition to that, we should do a site walk, in addition to that, and a little bit of mapping out of what that area is.
Do you want the site walk to happen concurrent with these other items, so we don't spend more time? In other words, one might say, well, you wouldn't do the site walk until you heard back from us, but we may want to schedule these things concurrently.
Yeah, I would say so. I would say so. Is that the council's wishes on that?
Do the site walk next week.
Wednesday, right before the next meeting.
Before the next meeting.
6:30.
They can mark that out.
Okay, wait a minute. You're jumping the gun here. The chair is the one that sets the agenda, but I understand what you're saying. There's so much going on. I want to make sure we're clear, so we don't go back into a situation that happened on March 5. Let's do the site walk concurrently, line everything up, and then we'll discuss it when we discuss the agenda for next week. I don't have a problem putting it on the agenda, but I want to stick to the subjects that are here. You're all set, right?
Yes.
And the next one is Counselor Polowski.
Not being very electrical knowledgeable, other than don't stick your wet finger in a live light socket. Does the Legion need a three-phase, or could they get by on a number of smaller transformers?
No, they need the three-phase for the equipment that they have. They have three-phase now, so they will continue to have a need for three-phase unless they eliminate whatever equipment it is that creates the need.
Okay, thank you.
Also, I mean, they, PSNH has done a number, a little bit of planning to add. This system that you're getting is designed for expansion. So maybe there's, they may be the only one hooked up to it now. Essentially, it could be others.
But down the road, it could be others, okay.
Good point, because that was kind of what I was thinking. You get a smaller box and not put that whole expansive that they're planning on. And we're just basically have to tell people that might want to do something bigger grandiose, the capability's not there, and that would reduce the size of that box. So, you know. Counselor LaBranche?
Real quick, as far as the location of the transformer, where is that in reference to the footprint of the building that was torn down? Is it on that building, or? It's not on that footprint?
No, the building was just further back.
It's where they had to park. Okay.
So it can go further back?
Oh, sure, it could go further back. You could put it in the middle of the lot, but that, again, would probably encroach upon whatever other use.
What other use would we be using it for?
The purpose we bought it for.
Just green space, if that's what, you know, we had talked about the possibility of just leaving it as a green space.
Right.
And as an area for drainage.
I understand the safety concern, and I'm thinking that if we're locating this transformer on the footprint of where the house was, the safety concerns would be no more than they were previously.
Right.
So, I mean, if that's an option, and that would potentially give you some green space or something, and maybe change the site distance. I mean, it's just, I think the site walk is the most critical thing right now, and I would encourage anyone that lives in that area to attend that site walk and be able to voice their concerns.
Okay, so let's just jump the gun here for a second. And for those who are here in the audience, does the council concur to meet next Wednesday night at 6:30 down on the site?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
All in favor? So, Mr. Wilson, would you get that posted and all the necessary legal things we have to do? And before we go any further, because I don't see any lights, there's a gentleman back there that's had his hand up, and he'd like to speak. Please state your name and your address, please, sir?
My name's Alan Knight. I'm, I live at 59 Exeter Road. I'm the service officer for the American Legion. One other point which this gentleman did make is that there is a one-phase transformer on Legion property which will not serve the Legion at all. Other than just behind the garage, the old barn, there was about four places looked at in all but three, I mean, three of them were probably more or less vetoed by public service in New Hampshire. So there was more than one. So if you would have to replace on Legion property the three-phase transformer, you'd have to move the one-phase transformer, which everything's been poured already. The base of it's been poured and everything. And just to add one more thing, is the trees being cut down, that was more to do with the flooding problem, and the Legion lost 30 feet of land by the filling in at a 45-degree angle instead of a straight down wall. So, I mean, that was all, the Legion didn't bring in chainsaws and cut down the trees, the town did it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Glover? I'm not sure if you want to continue your report, not at this point. But I'll give you that option.
Are there any other questions, I guess, before we move on to the vote, please, relative to the project, the Main Street project?
Please proceed. Thank you for your call today.
Oh, sure.
My phone, I ended up getting a chance to call you back, because I got to today. My phone call was about project updates sort of being put onto slides on Channel 13.
Okay.
If we can make them a little more frequent. I believe the current one up there states that the parking will be moved on May 29, which is sort of not very current.
Right, yeah.
And I'm, we're working on keeping things current and with the changes that are going on and... on, and I think keeping those current.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. As you may recall, I came to you a few weeks ago, and you should have received a copy of the proposed lease for the boat ramp. So, I had asked if you could please maybe take some time to review it and let me know whether you had any comments relative to it that I would then be able to go back to fish and game with.
Nobody has a question? I'll have a question. Is this a standard fishing game?
It's standard for the state, yes.
Standard for the state, and just tweaked to individual needs of the town.
That's correct.
So, there's nothing that, or should we, at this point, run this through our legal department?
The only thing that would be unique to it would be the appendix, which those would be unique to New Martha.
Okay. So, this should be run through legal. Okay. And I'm assuming you're going to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Great. No questions on this? I see no lights. Go before there's any lights.
Brings us to our next item, which is a discussion of the Rivermore Landing Condominium Association fence. I'm not even sure where to begin with this one. I think we've talked about this a little bit. I think we talked about it the last council meeting. Perhaps Council Bergeron raised the question of, you know, could it be fixed? Could it be straightened? Since then, and because the work is immediately in that area, we've taken a pretty good, hard look at the fence and the wall that it sits on. If you could picture standing in front of Rivermore Landing, so that the bandstand is to your right, there is a pedestrian bridge, what they refer to as the Northern Pedestrian Bridge. There is a section of fence that runs from the Northern Pedestrian Bridge up Main Street towards the Souflex Mill, and then it ends, and a chain-link fence begins. That section of fence and the wall that it sits on is in pretty serious disrepair. And we would certainly make the recommendation to the town council that we proceed to repair it and replace it with a fence in the same manner that we are doing up by the Eagles, which we had discussed at prior, at a prior council meeting. In subsequent conversations with Underwood, Severino, and then their subcontractors, Severino has come back to us and said that they've gotten their subcontractors to reduce the cost for putting in both the fence and the additional concrete work that needs to be done. So, that for the cost that we had reported to you, which was fifty thousand dollars to do the wall, to do the repairs, the cap of the wall and the fence for the sections up by the Eagles, we could also do the section that I just described. Okay, you're all nodding, so I haven't lost you yet. The sections of...
Same type of fence, though?
Yes.
The chain link?
No. The steel, they call it a wrought iron. It's a wrought iron look. It's a steel, black steel fence. The section of wall and the section of fence from the Northern Pedestrian Bridge to the bandstand, and then there's a section from the bandstand to their driveway, is in not as bad condition, and conceivably, we could make that work. We could put our sidewalk in, back it with curb, and that fence would then just remain as it is. Certainly, if you start thinking about it, it would make sense to try to replace that so that the whole section is all the same. I actually had an opportunity to speak with a gentleman who lives at Rivermore and is vice president of the condo association board. He happened to be there just as we were looking at this. So, a couple of emails got exchanged. So, Rivermore Landing is certainly aware of what we were going to discuss tonight, just so you know, that they know that we're coming to talk about this. The question of who owns the wall has come up again, and so I did a little bit of research, and I've read some planning board minutes from 1987, when the developers were trying to get planning board approval for some aspect of their project, and they discussed the wall and the fence. And as is somewhat happening now, well, it's your fence. No, it's your wall. It's our wall. It's a party wall. It's a shared wall. The line crisscrosses the wall. And the minutes suggest that the selectmen would, they needed to go to the selectmen, and the selectmen needed to resolve this issue. Unfortunately, I'm told by Becky Benvenuti that the minutes from the selectmen meetings from 1987 to 1990 are missing. So, I have not been able to research the selectmen minutes to find out whether, in fact, they ever discussed it and resolved the ownership of the wall. And I guess it seems a little fuzzy from whatever map or plan or you look at as to who owns the wall. It's clear to me certainly, first off, if you're out there looking at it and what they've done with the rest of their property, and also if you read these planning board minutes from 1987, that the fence was put up by the developers of Rivermore Landing. So, clearly, regardless of however they resolved the wall issue, the fence was put up and owned by Rivermore Landing. So, I guess what we're here to ask, or certainly to discuss, is whether we have the council's permission to, I suppose, fix the wall and the fence, as I've described, for the section that's in bad condition. Again, remembering that we do have the funds for that, because we've worked with the subcontractors. We'd have to go to Rivermore and work with them on this, and then what do we want to do about the remaining sections of fence?
I don't see any lights, so I'm going to jump in. The fence itself, have you been able to prove that that was put up at the time by the developer when they were developing the mills?
That is certainly my reading of the minutes. They say we will, there was a fence, apparently in 1987, there was already a fence there. They're saying, in the minutes, it reflects, "We will replace the fence." The catwalks were clearly, or the pedestrian bridges were clearly put in by the Rivermore developers to get from Main Street to the mills, and that fence matches what's on the wall.
Okay. Well, the walkways were put in by Richard Gallant, because it was a big deal then, when they were brought in, because they were electric, and they were going to keep the snow off. The whole town was out that day when that, those came in. But the fences were probably put up by Rivermore. So, I guess what I need to have a better understanding is, is at this point, is it Rivermore's intention saying to you that they own the fence, or they don't own the fence?
I'm not sure specifically of the fence, but I believe that they are now saying the town owns the wall.
Okay. If the town owns the wall and the fence, what I would suggest, that we see some documentation. In other words, from the condo association, where my understanding is that it has to be 100% buy-in of the first mortgages of the units. Something that tells us that we own, or they own, that we own it or they own it, something to tell us.
Yeah.
And it has to come from, I would say, from the association, and not just from, you talked to this person, you're talking, because I'm getting those same calls, and I'm hearing "The town owns it." And you're hearing another breath, "No, we own that. We put the fence up," you know? So, we need some clarity there. And I don't know how, and I know you're trying to work on that.
Yeah.
So, if we can't prove it on our end, because the minutes are missing...
Right.
And if they're saying it's not theirs, or it is there, prove it to us. Or send us something saying you don't want it.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
However...
However...
However, regardless of whomever owns the wall, that section, we need to do something about it. We need to address it.
Yeah, but we can't...
And we can, we could maybe not do anything about the other two sections of fence that I talked about.
Right.
It will look awkward, in my opinion, but I think structurally, we have a little better footing for leaving it the way, but the other section of fence really needs to be addressed.
I think you and I talked about that. If there's a way of straightening it out, paint it black like everything else, and put into the CIP some monies that would replace that fence maybe over a year or two.
Right. But that, I don't believe, will address whatever structural issues may exist with the wall or the grade issues that may exist once the new sidewalk and the street are put in.
And I have an issue with that, because we don't know who owns it.
I know.
Is it so bad that it's going to fall as a safety issue, or...
No, I don't...
It has to be...
I know, I see him.
Well, that's a whole other issue. The, we can't, it's a way of how we have to work the grades, and Mr. Malaski can certainly speak to that better than I can. But it's not just a, no, the wall, we don't believe is going to fall over.
Okay. But while you're there, you want to repair it.
While we're there, we want to do the right thing. I mean, that's really what this comes to, is we just want to do the right thing.
Okay. There's a gentleman in the back.
Yeah.
And I don't know if he's from Rivermore...
From Rivermore. He's the gentleman I spoke with.
Okay. Come on up.
Let me just reiterate one other point, that the section that's in the worst shape, because we worked with Severino subcontractors, we already have those funds.
Okay. Right. All right.
From the North Pedestrian Bridge heading north.
Right. And on some of that, what you're talking about, Julie, that wall there and that chain-link fence, is that, none of that is owned by the mills by NCDC?
I don't know.
I want some clarification on that one, before I would approve any expenditure or any funds to repair that. Who actually, again, this area, who owns that? If it's NCDC?
Sorry. Yeah, actually, you've already approved fixing that.
We did approve it without knowing? Hmm. Is that another meeting I missed?
Again, and this is, as we're moving forward, and yes, there are maybe some property line disputes, but the, but what we're trying to do is the right thing.
Yeah, I know.
We're trying to put the sidewalk in for the town...
Right.
...in the right manner, and sometimes maybe that does mean crossing the line a little bit, if you will, but we're just trying to make it right.
Right. No, I hear you there, Julie. I guess my point there was, if it's owned by the NCDC, then we should get a letter from them saying it's okay to go ahead and do this on their property.
I don't know whether Mr. Winowski at the next NCDC meeting can bring that up with them.
Well, but the work that we're doing is in the town's right-of-way.
But the fence they're going to replace, who owns that fence?
Well, I guess, you know, we get, you get down to the, from where the Eagles is, down towards the entrance, going towards the Lamprey River. Although, yeah.
Yeah, down that area.
We're repairing that.
Oh, that's the area you're talking about?
Well, no, but there's also another section with chain-link fence that's further south.
Okay. Okay. All right.
And that, again, it's that cap that sits on top that's falling apart, that we need to do something, and, you know, we can't replace one thing without replacing the other.
Right. I hear you. I'll let Mr. Council Polowski ask this question, it's probably related to something Julie was just talking about.
More statement than a question. I think with all the money that this town is sinking into downtown redevelopment and the downtown businesses that are suffering somewhat from the construction being one-way traffic downtown, I think that we ought to put our heart into this, and I think that the fencing should be the same all the way up, not just painted to look like, because painted to look like is not alike. And I think if we want an aesthetically pleasing downtown that will attract people, will attract other businesses, we've got to do it right. And I strongly feel that the fence should be the same all the way. Thank you.
I would say, in that vein, find the money, we can do it. Right? I mean, he's talking all the way up.
I'll let this gentleman speak, and then we can address the cost.
Good evening. My name is Jim Wyble. I live at the Rivermore Mill, Rivermore Landing complex. I'm a vice president of the condo association. My left is another member of the board. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Penny Haslam, and I'm on the board of directors, and I'm also on our finance committee.
I met Julie for a conversation about this the other day when I went to mail a letter, and she and someone from Severino were at the end of our pedestrian bridge, looking at the state of the end of that bridge, and Julie and I had a conversation for about a half hour, forty-five minutes, and I greatly appreciate that. Thank you so much. So, we're here. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not an engineer. I'm here as a citizen, so anything I assert, you know, in any way like that is certainly nothing but just an unprofessional opinion, so I hope you will take it like that. Julie mentioned the fact that the north part of our fence, north of the North Pedestrian Bridge, needs to come off to put a concrete cap right on top of the wall, as well as the sidewalk. And I think this is the first we've known of that, so obviously, if that's the case, then, you know, that has to come off and has to be replaced. We don't know if we own it or not. Okay? Similar to what you might have to say. We don't know, you know, about the past history of this. I've been at Rivermore Landing for five years, so all we have are relatively recent issues. I would just like to, if I may, pass out to you, our engineer looked, got a copy of your Underwood Engineers' design plan for the project, and there is a property line on there, which may be informal. Whether it's legal or not, I don't know, but our engineer, who we work with, has told us that he asked Underwood Engineers, and they surveyed the property line. So, if that's a meaningful piece of information, it's just a lay piece of information, I have marked it on here. I'm not asserting that it is, in fact, is the property line or anything like that. I'm just saying, this is the latest piece of information we have, and you may or may, Julie can certainly see if you disagree with this or that.
I actually did have a conversation with Julie on that, because one of your residents brought that to my attention, and we were sure that...
Yeah, if you can share, I, this is my first time in a town council meeting. I didn't know how many copies to bring.
Can you guys share that? Thank you. It's okay. I've seen it.
But if you believe this is relevant, the light-green line, which I have drawn, our engineer tells us is the property line. If you start on the left, you can see it's probably somewhere above our bushes, certainly inside the green fence. The property line apparently goes across the end of the first pedestrian bridge, across the more alleys, behind the pavilion. There you see the memorial pavilion, and then cuts in apparently across the middle of the North Pedestrian Bridge. And you can see, apparently, there's a fair amount of that lower parking area, which, according to this, whatever its status is, it may be town property. But I realize a boundary line doesn't necessarily go to the issues and negotiation that went on when the property was set up. So, that's just a piece of information that frames our discussion.
Is this the fence?
The next thing I would like, if I may, again, again, I only brought one set of pictures. I've taken pictures of the problems with the bridge abutment. After Julie talked with me, we talked about that, the need for repair there. There is, and again, I'm a layperson, there's a significant concrete abutment that holds up the town end of the north end of the bridge. I looked at it, and it just looked like there was a crack there. Our engineer says that that abutment is fractured, and the fracture is about at least an inch to an inch and a half wide, and apparently goes down several feet. And that may need some repair. It may need some engineering. And it is a safety issue, fire egress for the building. So, may I just show, I'll pass these around for you to look at. I have just one set. This is the bridge that we're speaking of. And if I need to come closer, I'll pass these around. You can see there's been considerable scouring underneath the concrete abutment. It's not apparent from the street, maybe when you do your town walk, if you want to look at that. But you can see that concrete abutment, there's been about three or four feet of erosion underneath that. And you can see the cracks, the fracture there on the curved edge, and then you can see my foot there, relationship to how large that abut, that fracture is. And it's probably a fracture that, that abutment goes out, would be underneath the sidewalk by two or three feet. So, I'll pass these around. We have a concern about these matters, and I can certainly give you electronic copies of those photos if you should want pictures or have questions. The last thing I will talk about is, the board has had some informal conversation about changing the fence. We are hoping for a good outcome for all of your hard work in redoing the downtown. We think, I'm not sure what the proper procedure is, whether you make a formal request of us to okay the town changing the color of the fence. We're probably pretty close to being able to work with you, at least to say, "Let's change the color." And if you can find the money, we would agree to changing that fence, the whole length of the Main Street, from our driveway up to where the chain-link fence starts, especially especially if it's going to fix, you know, if some of the major structural problems are going to be done. We don't really have money in our budget, we've done some major projects ourselves, and we've just assessed for them, which I'm sure you're probably aware of with the garage and other things just being done recently. So, we're here for exchange of information, and we're hoping we can work with you and cooperate with you, at least on, on the fence matter and getting this done. Hey, do you have any?
Well, I did speak with you yesterday, Ed, that was me on the phone, and yes, we are in full support of the whole, uh, Main Street revitalization project, and do want to work with the town and community on, you know, beautifying the Main Street and partnering with the town on this. As Jim said, we have undertaken significant repair projects ourselves at Rivermore, we just don't have the funds to do this ourselves, this year anyway. We could add it to our capital improvements list, but I just don't think we'd get to it within the next year or two even.
I was not aware about this conversation tonight. Normally, this is stuff that's put on the agenda. Julie Glover is, is the one that's really updating us on her part, so I appreciate what you've said and everything you've said, but I wish I had some prior knowledge of this, because one of the things that I think of right away is, you know, all well and good, that you're indicating to me in some way that you own the fence, if we want to paint it, that's okay, but the fence is falling down, but we don't have the money, that if you guys want to fix it and repair that, that's, that's an issue I have, only because, and it's not because I don't want to work with you, but we as the council up here don't have the authority to say, go spend more money. That, I'm sure the voters would have to, the townspeople would have something to say about that. I mean, certainly want to work with you, but I'm a little concerned how this all came about tonight.
We said, we were, in my conversation, this was seen as a timeliness issue.
Yeah.
Apparently, the construction's ongoing there, apparently you need to redo the sidewalk.
What's that?
Apparently, the, the bridge abutment needs to be done in order that the sidewalk can be done over it. So, we're here responding to whatever conversation that you would want to have, so.
The, when you say the bridge, we're really talking about the walkway, right?
Correct.
Yeah, it's, it's a walkway, let's call it a walkway, because I think a bridge is like something going over water or something like that. And when you talk about the, the area where the bridge sits on?
Yes.
And that's what's eroding down here?
Yes.
Well, it seems to me that's your property, because that's your, your found, your walkway, and it's sitting on something that you guys or somebody put there at one point, and you've become owners of that.
Well, I think if you have...
This is right, it's not that way, it's over here.
No, no, I'm talking the walkways going across.
Well, that's a walkway right there.
Yeah.
No, no, I don't, no, no, I don't mean the walkway going this way, I'm talking about the walkway going up, you know, heading into their property, like right here, there's a walkway here. Okay, is that what you're referring to?
This is the, supposedly the...
Yeah, the whole area is collapsing.
Yeah, but this is, if this is their property, this is the town, if that line is right.
Yeah, but this is what I'm talking about, this bridge here is falling, this walkway is collapsing.
The way it's shown on this, it's on the town property, not their property.
So, that's, that's what we're disputing, we don't know who owns it.
Well, I don't, I'm not here to make a claim of ownership or not, we'd have to do that in a...
I certainly, I welcome the dialogue, I certainly think that's important that we do that.
The other thing, if you look at that damage, it's clearly damage from runoff from the town street.
Yeah, and that's the other, the other issue too.
Which is why we're, why we're here. I mean, obviously, the water doesn't run uphill, we would never get damage, damage from our property running over that. So, the, the question is, and, I don't know, we're responding to the timeliness of the issue, because you've got the contractors here.
Right.
Something need to be done with the fence and with the bridge abutment, and we're here to talk about it. I don't know that we can settle the property line issue and who owns what in time to deal with the contractors. We're just, see if we can somehow move forward.
No, I think we should, I think we should move forward, but, wait a minute, we have councilors here. Mr. Bergeron?
Julie, did you say there was money for this?
Yes.
Part of it.
Well, again, we had already come and gotten, had a discussion and got approval to spend money to fix the sidewalk by the Eagles, let's call it, north and south of the Eagles, and to put a new fence in. And again, in discussions with Severino, or working with them, and talking about this section of the Rivermore fence, the northernmost section, that we all believe should be repaired and replaced in the same manner, we're able to do that within the same fifty thousand dollars. Do we have money to do the other sections of fence? If we wanted to spend contingency money, which again is within the project budget, yes, we could, and I believe Underwood's identified a cost of something like thirty-two thousand dollars to do the remaining two sections of fence. What the folks from Rivermore were referring to, the pedestrian bridge, is a separate but related issue. But I want to go back something to that, I studied the map that he showed with the green highlight, certainly if Phil needed to, he could address what that line means and so on and so forth, but I believe Underwood has no recollection of a discussion with their engineer relative to where the property line might be, and even if they had, Underwood doesn't have the authority to give away or take town property, in this case, the wall that's in dispute. I guess, again, what I'm saying is the right thing to do is the right thing to do regardless of who owns the wall. The pedestrian bridge is a related, as I said, matter. There is serious undermining caused by runoff over time, as Phil has pointed out, it's a state road, so it's not the town's runoff, it's the state's runoff, it's on a state road, but regardless of that, yes, their pedestrian bridge, and I know that he referred to it as the nor, the, the northern end of the town-owned pedestrian bridge or something, but it's undermined underneath, and our belief is that in order to be able to construct a town sidewalk properly and safely, we will have to do some work under their pedestrian bridge to shore that up.
Okay, and I, I don't have a problem with that, but I guess what I'm saying, we got a letter from them saying it's okay to do that. That's what I'm looking for.
Right, we will have to, right.
All right, and that is my, my only real big issue.
Yeah.
I want permission that we're going to go on their property. Hey, were you all set?
No, I still have...
Sure.
I, I agree with Mike Plasky that, I mean, if you walk down there, you, you look at that, you look at that wall and that, that fence, and it looks awful, with the money we're sinking into this downtown. I mean, I don't, I don't think anybody would disagree that that fence is in a serious state of disrepair. If we have some money to put towards that, would Rivermore be, you know, willing to maybe, when they have the money, pay for the remainder of the fencing, to, to finish this off? Because we all want continuity with the fencing, I mean, we've started on one end, let's keep it going all the way through. We're not going to have chain link and guardrail and a half-green and a half-black fence, I mean, it would look awful. I don't, and I'm sure you guys are short on money by the sound of it.
Well, if you're, yeah, if you're quoting thirty-two thousand, we really don't have that available to do that type of project. You know, we have other options possibly that we could explore.
If you could meet us somewhere in the middle, I'm looking to help.
Yes, somehow, there, we'd have to talk it over within the board, but we, we would not have that kind of money available to do that type of project.
Can I just give you an idea? We obviously have to do a fire main connection, for example, off of the new, the new pipes being run through town. We're going to bring the connection into our building, but we don't have the money to finish it. We're going to have to continue drawing our fire suppression system in through the old mill and brings in water from above the dam, so that's like fifty grand that we don't have, just to, to finish. It's going to cost us thirty or forty grand to, to bring in that fire connection down our drive and in basically to the middle of our building, so we're, we're looking at that. We're also trying to find a way, and if you know our upper parking lot by the church, it's going to be paved, basically, and we're talking about replacing that planter box, which was a previous conversation, it's in, it's in disrepair. So, this is the same sort of thing, let's make the downtown nice, so, so we're talking about doing that. We're trying to figure out, we're going to get the deck repaved, and it's going to come out about twenty feet, but we're going to have an area there in the middle, basically beside the church and between that little park, and it's probably about a hundred by fifty feet, it's probably going to cost us thirty to forty thousand dollars to repave that. Our engineer, again, says it's broken up, it's not worth capping. So, right there, we're already faced with a hundred thousand dollars more of expenditures. We've just assessed for the garage, which was a three-hundred thousand dollar repair. You know, it goes on and on, so.
The removal repair of last summer, which was a hundred and fifty thousand. So, our owners have assessment fatigue, and so we're trying to be as knowledgeable and protective of our owners as well.
I can understand that.
And at the same time, you know, keep the verbal statement up.
I, I think possibly what Councilor Bergeron might be saying here is, your CIP program, say it's out five years, six years, meet us halfway in some of the costs, and when you get caught up with all these other projects, perhaps some of that could come back. I don't think anybody's saying that you have to paint within, you know, two years or three, one year, something like that. But I would say those are probably discussions you should be having with the town administrator and, you know, other people.
I mean, certainly in the meantime, we'd be willing to think about having it painted black, if that would help. I mean, if you're short on funds and we're short of funds. Probably then, even the fence, the rail on our pedestrian bridges, we probably would repaint then as well, because all our discussion so far is just dealt with the fence along the street and not with the fence on the bridges, so, which we believe probably would be our expense if we ever, ever changed it.
And Mr. Winowski, your lights been on for quite a while.
Yeah.
Can you just let us know what you would like to hear from us next? I mean, will there be a letter from the council or from Julie, or that we can respond to?
It's probably appropriate, right, Mr. Winowski, yeah. We'll, we'll send something from this end to your end.
I mean, if timeliness is an issue, we have a board meeting next Tuesday evening. So, again, just letting you know that, so we can respond expeditionally.
Thank you for coming tonight and sharing that with us. Oh, do you have a question?
Mr. Milasky pointed out that I just need to clarify when we're talking about fences in front of the Eagles. The fence that I'm discussing is actually north and south of the Eagles, not strictly speaking in front of the Eagles. Sorry, and if you stand out there, it makes a whole lot more sense.
Yeah, okay.
I guess what I would ask at this point, again, don't mean to beat a dead horse, but relative to the whole issue of the March 5th meeting and what we believe we could go forward with, I guess I would ask for a vote of the council relative to two things at a minimum. One, that we understand that the area under the pedestrian bridge belongs to Rivermore Landing. However, we need to affect the repairs there in order to safely put in the sidewalk, so that would be one thing. The second thing would be, we need to repair the wall and the fence that belongs to Rivermore north of their pedestrian bridge.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilor Branch, you have a look on your face.
No, I'm, I'm good with that motion, I'm good with it.
Yeah.
Can I just, can I interject here a little bit?
I'm getting a vote, Phil, no. I know what you may say, but we're going to, that's going to be the next item for...
Do we want to do a friendly amendment to this, that we also receive a letter from Rivermore?
Yeah, sorry, yes, then we will, I will communicate this via writing to Rivermore and ask that they respond in kind.
Okay, I like that as part of the motion.
Definitely.
Okay. So amended. Mr. Winowski, roll call, please.
Councilor Quox?
Aye.
Do you have a second? Yeah.
Yeah, there was a second, yeah, she made it, and Julie...
I have a second.
Councilor Bergeron?
Aye.
Councilor LaBranch?
Aye.
Councilor Plasky?
Aye.
Councilor Mutelli?
Aye.
Councilor Carr?
Aye.
Chair McGlynn?
Aye.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate that. I think that the thing that Mr. McDonald may want to speak of is the, the second, the other two sections of fence? No? Okay. I suppose those two other sections of fence now remain up in the air as to what we, I, please, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we have to do anything with those as, structurally or grade-wise, as much as we need to with the other section.
The sidewalk plow is going to run along there now? There's really no protection for him. If, if he catches something just right and slides over, that fence isn't going to stop him. So, that's where I have some heartache. Could you let the fence go and maybe paint it? It can work with the grates, yes, but it's not going to protect that machine like I would like to see, a curb built into the sidewalk with the fence on top. We talked about putting the curb in front, but if someone stands on the curb, the elevation to the top of the fence isn't correct, so I'd like to see it all incorporated into one with the sidewalk, and then there's protection there for, for all parties, but I'm just thinking about the little guy and the little sidewalk plow, that's all.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to allow one more, and that's it, we need to move on on this subject, so, do you want to add something different, sir?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, while Mr. Milasky mentioned the issue about the snowplow probably going through the, the rail, our engineer has told us all along that that, the scope and size of that fence is probably not adequate for a road like that in terms of holding back vehicles, whatever, it hops, I mean, there's a tremendous drop there. I just remember that from our past discussions, I don't know what to do with that. I'm just saying there is a concern as to what would be an adequate fence there, and whether Rivermore should have responsibility for building a fence for a state road that would keep vehicles from going down over there. I, I don't know what the answer is, but...
But don't get, now, there's a sidewalk now, there's a sidewalk in front.
Well, I...
Granit curving, he's talking about the plow coming through on the sidewalk, it might catch the fence and pull it. He's not concerned about the car going up over, are you?
I'm not, no.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct, yes, you're correct.
But anyway, I just wanted to say, we've, we've been wondered about the adequacy of that fence, and again, we've never, for holding back vehicles, so...
Okay, thank you. Councilor LaBranch, and then we're going to vote.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we can possibly instruct Julie to try to get some hard numbers for us on the remaining sections of fence, and maybe, and I don't want to intrude on the agenda for next week, but maybe have this available in case we do have to move on it quickly.
Okay, that makes sense.
I've received numbers from Underwood, sorry, and I got them today.
Now, see how efficient she is, Councilor LaBranch?
You're good, Julie.
That's good, huh? And again, I'm sorry, we're speaking of the costs for the two sections of fence that maybe we do, maybe we don't?
Right.
Thirty-two thousand, two-hundred and fifty dollars.
Can I sharpen the pencil?
That is the sharpened pencil, actually. That's correct, okay. That's what the cost would be.
And where does that put us with the, that'd come out of contingency, correct?
We could come out of contingency.
Do we have nothing to cover us?
Yes.
At this point?
Yes.
But what about on the other side of the street?
There is no fence on the other side of the street.
No, but there's going to be other contingency needs.
No, I'm sorry, I knew what you meant.
Okay, well, let's vote on this motion, if you want to make that a motion to expend those funds, make it do that.
How soon do you need to work on that, to move on it, right away?
Well, because we still have to communicate with Rivermore, and there's going to be some back and forth, and...
They have a meeting next Tuesday.
And they have a meeting next Tuesday, so...
Let's do this roll call for this motion, which was to repair the damage on the wall and put up that fence and what they were talking about, with the friendly amendment of we would receive a letter from Rivermore Association allowing us the authorization to do that. And it doesn't have to be, wait for the letter, as long as we know the letter's coming, I want to make that clear.
Okay.
Mr. Bergeron, you have a puzzled look on your face.
Could you clarify that one more time for me?
Yeah, exactly, I'm confused.
What the motion was, who made the motion?
Well...
Oh, no, actually, she did.
You made it, she said I...
Wow, you asked for two specific things.
I did, that we, that we move forward with the repairs, that we move forward with working with Rivermore's engineer, actually, on the repairs underneath the North Pedestrian Bridge, so that we can proceed with the construction of the sidewalk.
And then you had a...
But you just voted on that.
No, the last vote we made was for the fence.
I thought it was the fence and...
It was the fence and the, and the pedestrian bridge repair.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Yes.
We did vote on that.
Yeah, you did vote on that. I thought you were amending your original...
So, what was this motion that we just did?
The other two sections of fence.
I'm not aware that there was one.
But you haven't made one.
No, we didn't make this, we didn't make the next motion.
No.
No.
I can make one if you'd like.
Go for it, Mike.
There you go, Mike.
I'd like to make the motion to authorize Project Coordinator to expend necessary funds from the contingency fund for the remaining sections of fence that is, that needs to be repaired, but also to make sure that you get permission to do that from Rivermore Association. Second.
Discussion.
Could I add a friendly amendment not to exceed thirty-two?
Thank you.
Could I add a friendly amendment not to exceed 32, 300, 32,250?
Is that the number you got?
Or the exact number that Julie gave us?
32,250.
Thirty, not to, right, we'll amend that, yes.
Mike's motion said to repair, do you want to repair or replace?
Repair or replace, whatever is required to make that right.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Quox?
Aye.
Counselor Bertrand?
Aye.
Counselor LaBranch?
Aye.
Counselor Plasky?
Aye.
Counselor Muteli?
Aye.
Counselor Carr?
Aye.
Chairman Glennon?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Do you feel like you've beaten up enough here? Thank you, Julie, and all of you for-
Could we take a quick five minute?
Yeah, I think we should, yeah. Take a five minute break, folks.